Can we convene our meeting to open session? The Board was in executive session since 6:30 to discuss some personnel matters. You could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong.
We could have discussions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Muyardi.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Judy Kehoe.
And Ms. Bear is not able to be present this evening. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 4th, 2020 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item three, reports. I know we don't have a Student Senate report or our middle school report this evening, so we'll move on to our Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update on our building situation. As of Friday, our plan is to have all of our buildings locked down. Staff will be working remotely. If any staff do need to come in or a parent needs assistance, all of the work will take place at the high school, which will be open just for essential functions. We'll be serving meals, providing tech support out of the high school and other essential district operations. This past week, we also met with our instructional leadership team to develop plans on, to continue meaningful learning experiences for our students and staying connected with them. We believe in these times that are uncertain, but most important is the connection we maintain with our students and families. So I know I've heard from many parents very appreciative of that outreach. Also, I do have daily conference calls with the Capital Region BOCs in order to collaborate as a region and assist each other. So we're working together on all the plans that we need to submit to State Ed so that we can best meet the needs of our students. And I'll continue to provide updates as I get more information, so.
Great. That's my report. Next is the Board report, and I just wanted to start out, at risk of leaving somebody out, a thank you for everyone in the district that has been pulling together to respond to our current situation. In particular, our food service staff for working on meal plans, our custodians for all the cleaning and disinfecting, and for transportation, the same with our buses, our technology staff for helping iron out all of the kinks with the, with online learning, our faculty at all building levels. I've seen as a parent firsthand what it means to the students, all the work that they're doing, and our counseling staff for reaching out to the students and for being accessible, and to all of our administrators for all the coordination and the planning. And it's been, everything's changed minute to minute, day to day, and it has not been easy. So, thank you. And I hope for the public, if there has been, if there is an oversight somewhere, that people know to please reach out. Separately, I, if this were an ordinary meeting, this is probably where I would have started out, but since our last meeting, I had the chance to go to the 5th grade musical and attend the BOU Spelling Bee, both of which were fantastic events and just reminders of what a community we have, which I think is something that we have really seen in the past, past few days. So. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers that have had to put in all that extra effort to put their classrooms online. I know for some it's probably very daunting and challenging, and the work that our tech staffs had to do with all the teachers, and I'm sure there's a lot more to occur with that, but to thank them for putting in the extra hours and effort in this crisis. And also, just that we're fortunate to have such a good district that we're able to come together and, and work with each other to make sure that the kids get educated and our staff and faculty are all taken care of. And I think that's the most important thing, that we just all work together and help each other out.
I would absolutely agree with everything you said. I would add that back when we had a normal situation in the world, I also attended the Spelling Bee and, and the 5th grade play, and once again, Slingerlands outdid themselves. And I also attended the barbecue, the Lab School barbecue. They sold 1,300 chickens and 560 rib dinners. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but they sold out everything that was on the truck.
Wow.
Did another good job.
Great.
And I just want to add one other thing that I forgot. It's just to the students and the seniors especially, who are probably missing out on a lot of opportunities and things that normally would occur as a senior, that it seems like it's the end of the world now, but it will be okay. And there are better things and bigger things to come, and we'll do the best we can.
I also wanted to thank everyone for their amazing work this week, especially our administration. I don't know how you guys have, have done it. I really appreciate everything you've done. I also think this week has given us an opportunity to see how our schools are more than just schools. This is the real heart of the community, and we are feeling its loss. And it really goes to show how much we should appreciate our schools. Our kids are missing their friends and their teachers and their community, and they are hurting. Parents are realizing how hard it is to teach children to read. We've all read with our children before, but to actually feel that responsibility, you realize how amazing our teachers are, that they can do that for 26 kids all day, every day. And just also the services that our schools provide beyond education. We are feeling the loss of those services, and I am so impressed with how our schools are stepping up and providing food to families who need it, and all sorts of other services. So I wanted to say thank you for all of that, and know how much our schools are appreciated in our community. One question I had regarding that is, one of the essential services that we do provide, our counseling services for our students, mental health services. It's my understanding that they have reached out to specific families and students, but are there resources for, for children who have never been in counseling before in our school, but are maybe feeling the stress and need to speak with somebody?
So, our counselors did meet, it's counselor, social workers, psychologists, there are resources they put together. All the schools have access to those. There's some resources on our website to, how do you talk to your children? There's a new one we posted on some of the anxiety people are feeling, not just kids, adults. And the counselors are certainly available, so we've let all our staff know if it's, our counselors are reaching out to kids that they had been working with, but if there's other students who are really struggling and their teachers noticing it, or they contact the school, our counselors will absolutely reach out to those families. In fact, I saw, one of our social workers said, basically did kind of a blanket social media and said, "If anyone needs assistance, please contact me directly and I'll help you." I'm a school social worker, so, yeah, they're definitely available for whoever needs it, as well as, I mean, our guidance counselors too. They're a pretty good first go-to.
Great, thank you.
I was at the Lab School barbecue as well, and the vegetarian lasagna was outstanding. Outstanding. And the, the amount of beautiful things for people to bid on, and what a, you know, what a wonderful cause and a wonderful resource with our little school within the school. It's just absolutely a great thing. And I also wanted to say that, that what is going to get us through is our community, is our contact at a distance with each other, and our ability to rely on each other for help. That's, it's all local, it's always been local, and I'm pretty sure we're going to make it through this.
Next up is our presentation this evening. This evening's presentation is on curriculum and special education and student services by Mr. Hurst and Ms. Johnston. With a preliminary introduction by Judy Kehoe.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's budget time, and when we talk numbers, many times you're hearing blah, 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 but I've always said, the numbers tell a story, and I think the things that we've talked about tonight really illustrate this district isn't about the numbers. The budget process isn't about the numbers. Obviously, we have to make them balance, but it's really about putting the resources into the key areas where we need them. And the numbers are funding the people and the services, and people have just stepped up amazingly to help us address all of these issues. So, we're so thankful for all of their efforts as we pull this together. We are almost to the end of the review of all of the different program areas, and tonight is the grand finale, if you will, with the instructional programs and the special ed services. These totals represent our baseline totals, what the budget would look like if we roll everything through exactly as it is, and it's about a 3.14% increase one year to the next. And, oops, where we started, we were at about a $2.1 million difference between our revenues and expenditures. We've really had very insignificant dollar amounts of our requests in the four areas that we've covered thus far. The requests coming in tonight won't significantly alter those totals. It really has been a very restrained year overall. You'll hear some restructuring proposals with staffing this evening. The big pending thing, as we are at this point, is waiting for the state budget to be adopted. It's clearly a change in our whole overall economy. The state budget is anybody's guess where it's going to come, but as we said at the last meeting, we're really not expecting any significant new aid coming in. I'm, I would not hold our hopes on getting a lot of state aid, if anything. I think the totals that we have are likely to be, hopefully, the totals that we end with. So, tonight, after we look at all of these other changes, we do want to look at what we're comfortable with, with the tax levy, because that will help us provide the funding that we need to support the programs. At the last meeting, we had a range of savings that we can roll into the budget based on staff retiring in the coming year, the difference between the outgoing salaries and then the lower salaries for new staff as they're hired. And I have a final figure for you tonight, and that will be $525,000 in salary reductions that we can apply to the baseline, based on both the instructional and the non-instructional retirements. So, a significant number, not quite as high as we've had in other years, but we've had fewer retirements this year. As a reminder from the earlier presentations, when the budget is adopted and as we vote on the legal ad next meeting, there will be the proposal to replace 13 of our buses, six large and seven small, at a cost not to exceed $1,210,000. Remember, because it's a capital expenditure, we are required to have both Board approval and the public's approval in order to make those purchases. The other component within the budget is the proposed capital outlay. This number is included as a $100,000 expenditure within the budget, and as long as we are making the community aware of that amount and we include it in our presentations, when the budget is passed, that would then be our approval. The project that is being recommended this year is to upgrade the 1979 hydraulic, highly scuffed up, starting to fray quite a bit elevator in the middle school. So, that would be a complete swapping out of those parts and then updating the interior cab. At the last meeting, for the athletics program, we had had some discussion at the board level about adding a modified assistant swimming coach. So, we have put that in here. It's a fairly nominal cost, but that $1,700 would be the cost for the stipend to run that program. In presenting the budget, from where are we going into this, I did update that athletics line to increase it by the amount of that stipend for the modified swimming coach, so that $10,600 that you see on the third line down includes that as a potential addition. So, also updating those totals with the $525,000 that I just mentioned on the salary savings, that brings our gap to about $1.5 million as we go into tonight's presentations. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Hurst and Kathy Johnston to get into their program specifics, and then I'll pop back up again to help with final decisions.
Thank you. Before we get to numbers, Kathy and I are just going to give a couple highlights from each of our departments, just talking about the great things that are happening with our programs. So, for the instructional program, over the last couple of years at the elementary level, we've added quite a few new enhancements. We have new science kits at K-5 level. We are well ahead of other districts in the state in terms of our implementation. Most districts are still two to three years out from being fully implemented, and we are currently fully implemented. We also enhanced our math program at the elementary level. We are, have a new phonics program that will be piloted this year, that we'll be implementing next year. At the middle school level, again, we just continue to increase our programming through summer curriculum work, offering students innovative approaches to instruction. And at the high school level, even with enrollment dropping, our, you know, our students still desire robust and unique coursework, and we've added quite a few courses over the last few years. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, five years ago, we had no computer programming or computer science courses whatsoever. We now have two courses through Sienna College, two AP courses, two courses that lead to Cisco Network certification. We have all of our Project Lead the Way courses in computer science. So, we've grown quite a bit just in that one area over the last few years. So, those are just a few of the highlights from the last couple of years.
Thank you. So, Dave and I both had talked about how happy we are to be able to talk about these positive things that have happened this year, especially during this really difficult time. So, when I look at our, the special ed program, starting at the elementary, we've really partnered with the RTI program and our related services. So, this year, we were able to provide more motor improvement at the K and 1 level, and also speech pathologists are pushing in. And all of this is really helping so that students might not ever have to come before special education. So, it's been a terrific partnership. At the middle school, we increased our social emotional learning, and one of the things that's been amazing to see is the amount of restorative justice. There's been such a turnaround in that, in that building, and the staff all are actively involved, and we've had a lot of positive feedback from families on that. At the high school, we really expanded partnership with regular ed and special ed, which has been terrific. We have art classes, our fax classes, tech all involved in some of our lead program, and, and it is allowing us to expand our business that a lot of you are familiar with, the paper pastries. And we launched our B.C. Barkery this year, so we now are beginning to sell pumpkin dog biscuits. I've tried it on a few of my dogs and friends, and they are going over pretty well, so we'll be expanding that as well. Our College of St. Rose program is in its second year and has increased in its numbers. And finally, I wanted to share the work that we've been doing for the Parent Advisory Committee. I know we've talked about this before, so we started that program a year ago. This year, we started with a steering committee, got about 25 people that have been actively involved, and we've had five programs that parents had asked for that we've put together so far this year with, with some real positive feedback. So, we feel like we're on a good roll, and once we get through all this, we're looking forward to our continued work.
So, first I'll just take a look at where we were last year compared to where, or this year, well, compared to where we'll be going next year. These are just straight rollover numbers. You can see that there's, you know, just shy of $2 million in increases across the different areas, which represents a 4.78% increase. Again, a large bulk of that due to contractual obligations. When you break it down by type, you can see there, the salary number did grow by about 1.7 million. Our equipment line, slight decrease, the way things are categorized now, the threshold has been sort of elevated for what's considered an equipment line, so some of that got absorbed into our supply line. BOCs is fairly flat, slight increase. Again, part of that is shifting some things from non-BOCs lines to BOCs lines, and then, which is where you see the other operating cost supplies there, a slight decrease, some of that we did push into the BOCs line. So, 1.6 million overall increase, which again, really is salaries. Here's a breakdown by position. You can, again, it's similar information. Our number of employees have not changed, and outside of the different salary lines, some of the other things you can see, we're going to just maintain at the current levels. And here's another look, really at the same information, just sort of consolidated. Another question came up before about substitute teachers. Our line is holding steady at about $650,000. And miscellaneous, always question, what is miscellaneous? So, here we go. It's, you know, proctoring, our Summer Elf program, intramurals, and so forth. And actually, although we budgeted 151 this year, depending on how things play out the next few weeks, we could see a pretty sizable decrease there if they cancel the state testing, because that represents, we spend anywhere between 20 and $25,000 on scoring. So, in terms of, outside of the rollover, what would we be looking to either reduce or add in the coming year? So, for the elementary school, I'll talk about enrollment, because that's really what drives the ads this year that we're going to be asking. Right now, if you take a look at Eagle, we're going to need to shift currently one teacher from kindergarten up to first grade, and that's just, again, due to the size of the current kindergarten cohort moving up. Hammergrill and Slingerlands, you'll see in a couple of minutes, we are proposing that we add a teacher in grade one at Hammergrill, which will help with our co-taught programs. And then it's Slingerlands, grade two, due to enrollment. Well, also, in a second, you'll see Slingerlands is actually going to add another second grade because we're going to slide a section from third grade down to second. But overall, the net is we're down 21 students in the primary levels, and this is very consistent with the reports we've been getting from the Capital Region Planning Group. So, at the intermediate level, again, you can see every level is down. We're down 64 students in this area, district-wide. So, all told, about 80 students, elementary. So, there's your third grade shift in Slingerlands that pushed down to second grade, and then we have one other shift occurring, and that will be at Hammergrill, a fourth grade section sliding down to third grade. So, the shifts again are due to just enrollment within the particular buildings. I am happy to show, though, that we're, you know, we're continuing to maintain very, very healthy ratios in terms of teacher to student. Our class sizes are remaining at very manageable levels, actually pretty well below the caps. In terms of additions, then, there's, here's the two additions that I referenced based on Hammergrill for, so that we can increase our co-teach offerings, and then Slingerlands due to the enrollment. So, no reductions proposed at the elementary level, and then the two additions strictly based on enrollment. At the secondary level, similar picture in terms of enrollment. We're down at both levels. Again, that, as we have seen in the past, though, the high school, even though enrollment keeps going down, the kids' sort of thirst for offerings continues to rise, so we're not seeing a decrease in what students are selecting to take at the high school level. So, we do have one reduction at the secondary level, and this sort of falls in line a little bit with the decrease in enrollment. If you recall, we added a mathematics teacher a few years ago to help absorb some of the computer science overage. As those programs were new, we anticipated that we would not be able to completely absorb that within the program, but we found within the last couple of years that we're able to absorb the computer science classes within the FTE that existed in the math, so we're going to request a reduction of 1.0 there. And then, the additions all really fall within the same area. If you recall back in the January meeting, you approved some FTE to help us bring back the tutorial in our Excel program. I'll talk a little bit more in-depth about what the tutorial looks like in a second, but essentially about 10 years ago, our tutorial program, because of budget cuts, our Excel program was essentially gutted. I mean, the only thing that remained in terms of what this Excel program represented was small class sizes. All the other supports that were associated with it went away. And we're starting to see that we really need to bring these supports back. And what those supports look like, uh-oh. It's frozen. Hang on. There we go. So, the Excel program historically had a tutorial program associated with it. A core team of teachers worked with the kids throughout, so it was very much like a middle school team approach, or similar to some ways the lab school approach. You have one common direct consultant teacher and small class sizes. So, for the last four, 10 years, really, the only thing out of that list that was true was the small class sizes. The tutorial program went away. We had multiple teachers teaching within the program, so the students didn't have sort of a team approach, and depending on which sections they were in, they may or may not have had the same direct consultant teacher. And this is important because the tutorial program itself really supports both students' academics and social emotional. During that time, it's sort of like a guided study hall. Teachers push into that, and they work with the students on different skills. They provide extra instruction, they help them make work up, they help them prepare for exams, but at the same time, they provide mentoring. There's a bit, an incentive program built in. They do community things where they might take a day and do an off-site community building field trip, similar to what lab school does. There's a much stronger family connection, because it's the same cohort of kids that are working with these teachers. So, this is something that we've been looking at for the last three or four years, and we just feel like it's, it's something that we can no longer wait on. So, that is the reason we're looking to add the Excel program back to where it essentially was 10 years ago. So, I'll now turn it over to Kathy.
All right. So, move this forward. So, in our department, in special education and student supports, we actually have three departments within the department. So, the first one is our special education teachers and service providers. Then we have our health services and our psychological services. So, all together, budget to budget, we have a 3% increase. Next, we look at our expenditures. So, whoops, did I go too far on that? Oh, sorry. Thanks. I wanted to, from the beginning, talk a little bit about the, the general fund and our federal and state aid. This is a big part of the special education program. So, we get pretty significant state aid for our out-of-district place students. And what I mean out of district is when we're putting them in special programs. As you can see on that top line item, we get $1.15 million. As you can see on that top-line item, we get 1.15 million dollars back on that. We also receive Medicaid funding. We have somebody who does that on a regular basis with our therapists. And then we get a small amount back from Albany County for our preschool program. So altogether, the total reimbursements for this were 1.4 million. Oh, it's just, okay. So now, similar to what other folks have done, we're looking at our expenditures by type. Top line there is our salaries, which make up 67% of the total budget. The next line item is our BOCs services. And as a reminder, I know all of us use BOCs in a different way. In special education, we often talk about the fact that we have a full continuum of services within district, but there are certainly times when we have students that we don't have the right program for in district. And we might only have two students, for example, so not enough for us to create a program. So the first thing that we do in those instances is look to a BOCs program. First, I'll look to Cap Region BOCs, and then we are lucky enough to be close to Rensselaer County, and we'll use Questar BOCs as well. So for the last few years, we've, I've put in the budget a $2 million amount to utilize, but I haven't used that in the last few years. So I'm looking to drop that by 200,000 this year. And the next line down is tuition paid, it says, to other schools. Those are really our private placements, so programs like the Wildwood Program or the Center for Disability Services. Again, more specialized, so we would look first to BOCs, and they might not feel like that's a right fit, so we'll look to those schools. So I took the 200,000s from the BOCs line and put it in the private tuition line. Excuse me. And finally, we have our other operating costs. So we contract with a number of private providers to help us with our students with disabilities, specialized school psychologists, psychiatrists, so those are those services. So all told, that's up by $377,000. So now, I'm gonna share with you the positions, salaries and positions. So currently, we have 34 special education teachers, K-12. We have 92 aides to students with disabilities. For those of you who've been on the board for a long time, you know that that's down significantly from where it had once been, and that's really because of the overall work that people are doing to really try to help kids become more independent. So we're pleased to see that. There's the administrative component of our department, so my position and the CSE chairs. We have 11 speech pathologists, five occupational therapists, and two physical therapists, and then six clerical staff. Continuing with the salaries, you'll see that we have 12 nurses, Joanne as a nurse coordinator, and then the 11 nurses. We have two clericals for the bigger offices, so one for the middle school and one for the high school. Eight school psychologists. We have our extra help and substitutes and extra help in overtime, which went up a little bit, and then our health insurance buyout. One of the things that's really important with this particular slide is the increase in the nurses' salary. That went up by 6.7% this year, really twofold. One is the regional tightening of this group of professionals that are so absolutely necessary to our entire district. The other piece is really recognizing the increased work these folks are doing. Jody and Dave worked really closely with the BCTA on this contract, and people were very helpful in offering a very appropriate increase for them. This slide is showing more federal grant money, and on these, it's just the top line, the SES IDA grants. It's a very big part of funding for us. As you can see, the last year that this was audited was 1819, and we received $963,000. We utilize that money in our department for a lot of our equipment, a lot of the assistive technology that we use, both in staffing and in purchasing equipment. But the reason that it's so important to look at this now is, given all of the concerns, I wanted folks to realize the amount of grant money that we utilize, and in case that doesn't continue, we would need to find ways to incorporate that back into the budget. So now I'm going to share with you the reductions and the additions. So, I will say that these kind of line up with each other, so look at them. Sometimes it seemed a little confusing, and then you'll look at the additions and see another part of it. First part is the reduction of a .9 special education teacher, K-12. So this year, as we do, starting in January, we look at students and do the projections for next year, and we will not need a .8 special education teacher at the secondary level based on all of our projections. And then, piggybacking on what Dave said, a .1 of that was, we had a special education teacher this year helping with that Excel program, and with the restructuring, that won't be needed. The next line is a reduction of 1 aide to students with disabilities, and you'll see on the next slide, an addition of a TA. I'll explain that in a minute. And then, a .6 reduction of a CSE chair, and again, it's gonna go on to the next slide, so I'm gonna jump to that. So looking at the requested additions, there's a K-5 special education teacher. Big part of the work that we've been looking at this year is the best way to provide services to our students. And we looked at some of our skills classes. This year, we had three skills classes at Hammergrale Elementary School. And looking at students' needs and their progress, we made the decision to reduce that to two, and we wanted to increase our co-taught program. So we're gonna utilize one of the teachers from the skills class, who will be teaching a few sections of co-taught, and then we needed an extra teacher to look at the projections for co-taughts in all five of the buildings. So there is the request for that. We also had one of our CSE chairs leave mid-year, and we are looking to take that position and the preschool position, and are requesting an assistant director to help with the overall special ed programming, so that there would be five bodies, if you will, a director, assistant director, and three CSE chairs. Right now, we have my position and 3.6 chairs, so it is an increase. And then finally, the teacher assistant. So here at Bethlehem, we have always had teacher aides. There's a difference between a teacher aide and a teacher assistant. A teacher assistant has some certification and are able to do more direct teaching with students. As we look to next year, we are changing what we have referred to as our lead program at the high school, a skills program, and turning it into a different type of program. And as we did tons of research and looked at other programs, we felt it was really important to have a TA in the room with the special ed teacher, so we could really do more hands-on teaching. So we would be reducing by 1 aide and requesting a TA.
So to summarize, on the instructional program, the additions we were looking at, which again, included the two classroom teachers, and minus the reduction, we're looking at a net add of 192,000.
And for mine, the total additions were 232,000 minus the reduction, so the net
Yeah, do questions before Judy gets into the...
If you have a question? So Dave, with the instructional staff at elementary, I was looking at the numbers, and I just wanted to understand where the change was occurring. I know you went over it briefly. So Eagle last year had 10 teachers, but this year, you're putting 11...
I'm gonna have to go back, hang on.
...with six less students, and then at...
Oh, you know what? Eagle's a net, it should still say 10. Originally, when we first started looking at this, the kindergarten, our kindergarten projections, based on the number of students that were eligible to enroll, never came to fruition, and that, that should be a 10 as well.
Okay. And then that would... So with the five additional students at Hammergrale, it required an increase of 1.
But don't forget, that's, that's to allow for co-taught.
Okay. I did hear you say that.
Students who are in the skills class would be pushing in those classes.
Okay.
Right.
And then with Slingerlands, is this right? It says plus 2?
Right. Because they're gonna, well, they're gonna gain two, because one is gonna be an add because of the size, and then one is gonna be a shift down from third grade. So when you, when you look at Slingerlands for K-2 versus 3.5, they, they're losing one 3.5, but they're gaining one. So they're really only picking up one across the whole building.
No, I, I know. I was just trying to figure out the 2...
Right, so it jumped 2.
For 224 versus 228 for the three grade levels. I can see where you would need the extra one for second grade, but if you're going by the guidelines, would it still come out, even though you're netting only...
Well, because if you went four sections, I mean, that's what you'd end up having to do, would be go, only do four sections of second grade, essentially.
They'd be over the cap already.
And they'd be over.
Okay.
It becomes, yeah. Once you hit the cap, and you add that extra section in, it brings the numbers down to where they might perceive to be kind of low, but, but if you put them back to the, if you take that section back away again, you end up over the cap.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
When you're that close to the cap, it gets...
Right, no, no, I know when it's that close. I just, I was, I was not sure with that one particular. The 2 threw me off with the...
That's, yeah. At one point, the kindergarten numbers, we adjusted, and I forgot to change that back down to a 10.
The other question I have, which we didn't touch on, what are the lab school numbers looking like for this coming year, and what are they with the other classes at this point? I know we haven't talked about that.
Yeah, and this, with all the students being out now, that, so we start scheduling on Monday, and that's when I would, we start talking about that.
We don't have any numbers as of right now?
So I don't have the numbers. I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, they're requested, they would be in this master, the request book.
But they, yeah, they don't, but they don't even put the, we just placehold for 30 kids in ninth grade. We don't know who the kids are till actually further out, but now, I'm not sure where they're with that schedule.
Well, you know, just let us know. Just, I was a little concerned about that, and I know the numbers have kind of been declining and with budgetary...
And they did do quite a bit more outreach this year.
I think that the numbers are up this year.
Okay.
The number that applied, I know was up.
Okay, good. That was all I had.
Sure. Just for Kathy, real quick. Just always ask, do you feel that with your staffing changes, your, your staff will be able to meet the needs? Sometimes it's always been tight in terms of the PTs and the OTs. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that you felt comfortable with the staffing levels where it was.
Yeah, Chris, I do. We've done a very different look at our staffing over the last, actually, two years, but more so this year that we're in right now. And what I mean by that is that, in the past, we had therapists supervised by, like, if you were an elementary therapist, you were supervised by the elementary CSE chair. We moved to having one of our chairs supervise a whole group of people. So one of our chairs supervises all of the OTs, and they get together more often, so they're able to really work. Instead of working at the elementary level, they're working at a K-12 level. So OTs, we added one last year, and people felt like that was still a doable number, given the projections that we have. Same thing with, with speech. It's the first time in a long time we've had a K-12 supervisor getting that group together and looking at all of it. So we did feel confident in those numbers.
One other question, just about the co-taught, and this is just out of ignorance, so I just trying to get a little enlightened here. How many co-taughts do we have in the elementaries? Does there, do we know the set number right now that we have?
I don't have it in my head.
Yeah. Sorry.
It's probably eight? And thinking eight currently...
For the next year.
You, oh, you want, you mean for next year?
I'm just curious, because I didn't know, because I don't remember we had a group of parents come in here earlier this year talking about co-taughts, and...
We did.
And I just, I know we, we talked about it, but I just didn't, I didn't know the numbers. I just was just curious to know where we were on that.
Well, the, the goal for next year, the, the hope is to add four co-taughts. So with two full-time special education teachers, we would be able to do that. So it is, is definitely an increase.
Thank you.
I spoke with Willow earlier, and she gave me a few questions that she wanted to be, to ask, although she couldn't come here this evening. She was concerned about reading services, especially at the elementary level. Do you feel like we have enough reading services, resources right now?
Okay, okay.
So I'll go first, and then I'll let Kathy piggyback on that. So a couple of things. As I mentioned earlier, we did, we are fully implementing the K-2 phonics program next year, so that, that's sort of a tier-one approach to phonics. We also have, I mean, I mean, over the last few years, we're up to, we have 15 intervention specialists at the elementary level. Some do both math and reading, but we have seven that are dedicated to reading alone, spread across five buildings. You know, and that's on top of what, again, like I said, what the classroom teachers are already doing. So I do feel like with the RTI process and the number of intervention specialists we have, and the tier-one programs that we've put in place at the classroom level, I feel that we have the appropriate level of reading support.
Okay. But to, if I can just piggyback on that, one of the things that we, we've also done a lot of work on this year is looking at the fact that kids will start in RTI, that's where we want them to start, and begin to get intervention. And if they continue to struggle, then they move on to special education. And so we've worked collectively as elementary special educators at making sure that, once you get there, we have consistency in our reading program. So actually, this week that we're living in was one of our next meetings, that that group was going to get together to continue work on what, what we will be doing. We're pretty close, but that will be a group that I will work with virtually over the next few weeks. So I think that we've made, between the work that we've done together at regular ed and special ed, we are definitely moving that forward.
She was asked, also asking about the possibility of looping, and whether or not we are, especially for special ed students, whether or not we're exploring looping in elementary school?
Looping, like...
The classroom teachers or special ed providers?
Well, I'm not sure exactly which she was referring to.
So for, in general, we do have some teachers who loop with their classes, but it really depends on, you know, sometimes we don't have the same sections, any given years, like you saw in the enrollment, the shifts happen. So I know we do have some teachers who like to do that, but that's not, it's not a consistent approach.
I, I think she's probably asking, though, do we ever consider looping for the, the special ed cohort because of consistency? I know we've done it for sections, like the section goes to...
Well, the skills...
It's natural loop.
Is natural that they would go together. I'm not sure if, she's wondering about co-taughts. We have had some co-taughts that have done that, so like, a fourth-grade group would then move on to a fifth-grade group. There isn't a set practice for it. So, you know, if, if we can fine-tune the question, I'd be happy to look a little bit more.
Okay. And along that line, she was also wondering about, excuse me, keeping the co-taught and the skills classes within one elementary school as the cohort progresses. I know, right now, we have kids moving from Hammergrale to Glenmont.
And it's a concern, it is a concern, I've heard from other parents in the district also, whether there's any way to plan so that, so that the students can, especially when they have siblings that are in one school, so they can continue in one elementary school for their entire...
I, and I, I am well aware of that concern. Many parents have shared that with me. So, in our move to increase the number of co-taught classes, um, you know, even adding four co-taught classes puts more co-taughts in each of the buildings. So, let me back up a, a minute. We project for next year that there will be a fairly large co-taught kindergarten in one of our buildings. Once that group starts, if a majority of those students continue to need that type of program, it will travel through in that building. Those, when that happens, like we have one of those at Glenmont this year, it started at a very young age and it, and it stayed together. So that's an ideal si- situation. There are times that we have students that have started with RTI programs and don't start to need a co-taught until maybe third grade. And then some of them move out and some of them move on, you know, we're, I'm always conscious of the number of students. So, we are always looking to try to keep them in one building when we can, particularly the co-taught programs. The skills program, we, we've talked about this before. So we have had, we have the, the K, the one, two, three. K-1, 2, 3 at Hammergrill, and the 4, 5 has been at Glenmont. And, um, for a variety of reasons, it's been really challenging to try to get that in one building. It's something that I will always look at, um, but it was not a feasible thing to do this year.
What, what are some of the challenges to getting it all in one building?
You have to be careful of percentage of students that you, you know, you're talking, if you had several co-taughts and skills classes in one building, and one of, Hammergrill is already well over twenty percent with students with IEPs, that is not a good balance to have in a, in a building. And with elementary schools, because they're smaller in general, trying to balance those out, you're trying to make sure that there's not that skew where you have that kind of percentage of students with IEPs. So that's one of the challenges. I also think some of, Kathy, um, didn't necessarily mention this, but you also have students who perhaps start in a skills or start in a co-taught and then need a different program, which may not be at that building. We don't have enough students where you can have skills, co-taught, resource rooms in every building and every grade. You know, you just don't, we don't have that, those numbers, we're not big enough, uh, to do that. So that's one of the other challenges with students having to sometimes shift buildings.
And also integration purposes of the classroom.
Absolutely. That's why you want a balance in all the buildings.
I, oh, are you done?
Yeah. I had a couple of questions for you. First of all, thank you Kathy for the last couple of years. There's been so many changes in special ed. Uh, the parent advisory committee, I'm sure, has made a lot of people happy. The St. Rose program, all, all the different avenues for the parents to have their kids participate, with regular, traditional kids outside of their, their, their classrooms, so I think that's great. So thank you. With regards to the teacher assistant, I was always under the impression the union would never go for TAs. Is that not true? Do we not, because this would be the first TA that we have in school?
We have TA, we have TA in the contract.
Yeah, they're in a contract, and actually, ten years ago, as part of the Excel program, TAs were cut out of that program.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that's a change. Under our previous superintendent, they might have said that that was not part of the union agreement, so I just wanted to clarify that, that issue. Students who get the assistive technology devices, do they all have them currently that, what they need at home, they have available to them?
During this challenging time?
Yes, okay, so we've insured that.
Yeah, they, absolutely, yeah. And, uh, and our, um, AT people are working remotely and have been in touch with kids regularly.
Good, I just wanted to make sure. And then, um, just as something I always ask for with the RTI and the special ed, that we continue to work on providing the board with numbers that show, like, students, like, minutes provided, whether it's group, individual, just so we can have an idea of, um, if we're, not that we're saying that you're not doing an adequate job, but just so we can say, yes, we feel comfortable with the numbers that are, that are up there. And it's always something I ask every year.
Sure. So you want numbers on RTI and then numbers of identified special ed?
Well, no, just going forward, like, understanding, like, how many students receive PT services or OT services and, uh, the number of minutes or per person that they're, they're servicing. So we kinda have an idea if we're staffed, like we would, looking at the classroom sizes, saying that there's twenty-four students per whatever second grade, so, having that same comfort level with the RTI program and with the other services that are provided. But I know sometimes that data is a little hard to get, but it's something we keep...
Why not take the IEPs and add up the, the number of, of students that have the IEPs or, or other plans and, um, just the number of minutes that each child gets and give us the number of children, and it at least gives us a base from which to operate.
That has no, that, that doesn't necessarily correlate to scheduling. I know we talked about this last year.
We understand...
Just so you're clear, right, so...
I know it has nothing...
Because the ways kids can be grouped and so forth, just so, yeah.
You can have two kids in a group, five kids in a group, one kid in a group, but at least it gives us a base to understand we have so much service that we have to provide. We have X number of instructors, teachers, providers to give that. And we don't have any kind of, uh, historical record as to what, how many minutes so many teachers provided over time. And if you, the fact that, that you have five kids in a group, or one kid in a group, so there's some time, so some of that time is not going to be, um, real time. It's, it's, you have five kids, say, one minute each, so you have five minutes here, but it's, it's really one minute. It's not five minutes, it's one. You have, uh, let's do it this way. If you're doing, um, if you're doing, if you're seeing a child for ten minutes, one child at ten minutes is ten minutes. But you're providing, if you're providing five children in a group, and it's the same ten minutes, the service you're providing really is fifty minutes. And it would give us an idea as to how much service is being provided. It's not a scheduling issue. And this is a number that I've been looking for, for some time. If, and it's simple, take the IEPs, the, what the provider recommends as the amount of time that the student gets, give us that and give us the number of students that we're counting the time for. And over a two-year, three-year, four-year period, you can see how much service is being provided, uh, roughly per, in, per provider. And at least that gives, gives the board a base as to how much we're doing and at what cost.
We could, uh, we could get that. We'd also have to look at, because we started the last couple of years doing, uh, RTI for speech and OT, that that accounts for some of their times that isn't necessarily on an IEP, but that would be a portion of their assignment.
So just to add that into it, I mean, it, it's not, it's, it's, I know gathering the numbers may be cumbersome, but I think, once we had that, I think we could appreciate better, um, how much work goes into it. And have a, uh, at least would feel, at least I would, that we're doing due diligence and to make sure that we do have enough there.
Do you wanna ask?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, getting the numbers isn't, it's not cumbersome. The issue is, if I tell you that I need a hundred minutes, that could be two fifty-minute sessions, or depending on who the kids are, it could look tor- so...
I'm fully aware of that data.
Just the pure, I know, but the pure number of minutes then versus number of students doesn't necessarily mean anything. Because, because if none of the kids need individual, that's gonna look a whole lot different than if a bunch of them need individual. Whereas you could have the same number of minutes, you're gonna need way more people if there's a lot more individual versus group.
Can you run it?
If that makes sense.
Well, how does the program work? So when you run the data, can't you have two...
No, you have to liter- you have to hand-schedule and say, these three kids need groups, so they're gonna be grouped together for thirty minutes. So you find a spot in the teacher's schedule where that works. But then these three kids need individuals, and that, that's three time slots for essentially the same type of services.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, like, you would dump it into, let's say, I'm just using this as a basic example. You dump the information that you're getting from whatever program you're using into, like, an Excel. You have nothing that you can...
You have to hand-schedule related services.
No, I'm not talking about the schedule. So you know how many group sections you have of five kids and how many minutes?
But you can't even do that, because suppose I have, if I have ten kids that can be in groups of five, it doesn't necessarily mean I can just do a group of five and a group of five, because depending on what, the, the grade span, depending on teacher's schedule, you might, you might have to, even though they can go up to a group of five, you might have to do three groups of, or two groups of three and one group of four, because two groups of five just doesn't work within the schedule because of the different constraints. So, because you can put, say, third and fourth graders together, but that doesn't mean that within their schedules, you can actually fit them together. So now, instead of having one group of five, you have a group of two and a group of three. That's not gonna show up when I just say to you, I need five students to be in a group, no larger than five, at thirty minutes each.
Or you could have number of students, number of minutes provided, number of sections, is kinda like a gauge. You have three columns where you could kinda just have an idea.
I, I can give you that, I just don't know what sense you're gonna make.
Or, or the number of students also we're servicing from year to year with RTI.
We have, we have the RTI data.
The other thing, um, at the elementary level, or K-8, we are using what's called a three-to-one model, just so you filter that in as well. So what that means is, we provide direct services for three weeks in a month, and on the fourth week, they do collaboration. So, and that week, um, let's say I'm getting language therapy, and I'm seen in a small group three times a week, okay? On the fourth week, the therapist is going to be making a contact home with me, or going into the classroom, the teacher might say, Kathy's really having trouble during this time. And that's not my scheduled time with the child, so then I'm gonna go in there. I might, you know, the therapist might push in at a writing time, excuse me. So, that's a little hard to filter in, it counts as part of their service, but indirect. So I'm not sure how you factor that in as well.
I think it's more of a gauge to make sure that we have enough staff. It's not to say that we're overstaffed, certainly, but with the requirements they have to follow up with writing documentation on what they're doing and the lessons, it just, I...
I mean, if you want number of providers and number of minutes, I mean, that can be pulled easily. I'm just not sure it's gonna make a lot of sense, the way it pulls from there, from frontline.
So you want that for RTI, speech, OTPT, TVI?
Well, RTI's not in frontline, but we have it in intervention compass of data.
Yeah, just something, just a basis. And then we could ask questions off of that and...
Sure.
Do we have any, uh, data at this point showing whether the RTI services at the younger grades are, are leading to a decrease in, um, students needing more significant special ed services later on?
Yeah, so, um, so Laurel, I think it was last spring, presented that information, that we have seen a decrease, not only in number of referrals, but number of students, percent, I shouldn't say number, because our enrollment's going down too, so that, numbers are naturally gonna be down. But our percentages have dropped in the upper grades, and the referrals have dropped in the upper grades because of that. And we're continuing to relook at how we're actually doing at K-2. We're actually looking at some models where now we're gonna look at RTI for speech at the K-2 level and some other services, recognizing that early intervention is, um, what research says is the best.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I meant for you guys.
So we have just a few remaining, uh, district-wide areas that I wanted to touch on for changes. The first one relates to our communications services. We usually keep them incredibly busy, and, uh, as of late, I think they've been on, uh, overdrive, helping us with communicating all of the important information. We have, in the past, obtained these services through BOSIs, and our recommendation for next year's budget is to convert a point-eight FTE for our lead communications person into a district employee instead of a BOSI's employee, and to increase that from four days a week up to five days a week. So, um, it's on here as a reduction, that is, the reduction in the cost of the BOSI services for that position. And then, oopsie. Uh, it's a ninety-three thousand dollar reduction, and then the addition would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So again, that's salary and fringe benefits, but that's for five days, which is why it's a higher cost for us versus the ninety-three thousand dollar reduction for the four days of BOSI's services. The other reduction, um, from having a few extra weeks to refine our estimates on fringe benefits, I've been able to reduce our projections on our dental insurance, our health insurance buyouts, and on our actual health insurance costs for a combined total of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars to help us lower our baseline costs. So the combined additions and then the reductions would provide about a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollar reduction off of our current baseline totals. So, if we look to where we are with all of these proposed changes rounded to the nearest thousands, so they won't tie out exactly to what was on the earlier slides, that would bring our total expenditures up to the one-hundred-and-three million, four eighty-six. And that would mean that we would still have a remaining gap of one million, five seventy-three. And that is the amount that would be generated with the tax levy at the maximum allowable tax levy, um, of the one million, five seventy-three. So that would be, if you accept all of the recommended additions and subtractions, and if you're okay with the Mattel at the one million, five seventy-three, that would give us a balanced budget. We, of course, are still waiting to see what changes are in store for us with the state budget, so that might be an update at our next meeting on April first. And, um, again, we're hoping, because we, at the next meeting, we will have to adopt the budget, because we are required to submit the property tax report card, and then we have to appu- approve the legal notice as well with all of our propositions. We're hoping, um, tonight, to have a sense from the board of what you're comfortable with in terms of what you wanna see in the final budget. Are you good with this as a proposal? Or are there any changes that you would like to see? Also, at that meeting on April first, I will update the projected numbers for where I think we're going to come in for this year. And then, I mean, we will be on target with our budget for this year, but we have to look at some of the impacts from services that won't be provided, potentially, um, in the rest of this year, whether there's athletics impacts, field trips, and things of that nature. And then I will also look at, what does our budget look like over a multi-year period? And using some conservative assumptions, given that we're likely to have some economic woes that may be affecting us. So, open it up for discussion, and just, again, trying to get a sense of what you're comfortable with.
Jody, what happens if the, um, state budget is not passed on time?
It wouldn't be the first time, and as in any case, we go with the best information that we have at the time. So the best information I have is what was released on the governor's runs as adjusted. And, um, we always have variances in our state aid from one year to the next, based on budget to actual, just driven by changes in actual levels of services. So, there are usually a relatively small margin of difference, so we'll go with our estimates and then adjust and respond as needed, if it's different.
Jody, were we doing the list where we had the priorities that, and the secondary? I thought we talked about, we were gonna give a list, and then usually, don't you usually give, like, we did...
give, like, we did this, or this, and this would be the percentage in taxes? We don't have that.
And, and if... We didn't really have, we had a few other requests, but there were hardly, we didn't have a lot of requests this year. Most of them were substitutions or restructuring.
Restructurings and staff, yeah.
So there were a couple, um, wish list things that didn't, we didn't include, but they were minimal. So it wasn't like in the past where we had...
Right, we had more requests, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. And we looked at that, and some of those reductions, even if we were trying to lower that tax levy, they were really important services for the students. So the Excel services that Dave was talking about tonight, that is lower in the grand priority scheme of the requested additions, but just because it's lower doesn't mean it's not important. It is a relatively small amount in the overall, so, um...
I think if you go back to your beginning slides, don't you have, uh, what it would be, 2% versus 2.34?
Yeah, that was on one of the choices slides. So if we were to go down to...
That would give you an idea of what the difference in dollar would be.
The 2% number.
Well, I meant more, the percentage of tax increase. Like, if it was a two-point, what it would convert to?
Right, that was in the very beginning.
Right, yeah.
13, um, 1.343.
Right, is 2% versus...
Okay, thank you, Dave.
On slide four.
You were faster on your paper copy.
No, I used the electronic.
So...
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, the 1.34 for the 2%.
Yeah. So if, this is, um, if it were at 2%, then obviously, uh, we would have to go back and...
Redo the numbers.
Right. So it would be helpful to know, I guess, for planning purposes, what...
So with the current Mattel, it would be less than 2% with a tax increase.
Most likely, I know that there has historically been growth in the Bethlehem numbers. I only have the New Scotland preliminary totals, and those were up about $1 million. They had a slight reduction in their equalization rate. I don't have the information from Bethlehem yet. So, but they typically have gone up multiple millions of dollars each year. So if that trend continues with that increase in the assessed values and absent a shift in the equalization rates, that 2.34% could feel closer to 2%. Typically, a lower number with the growth in the assessments.
Judy, do you know what the, um, equalization rate is for Bethlehem?
No, I requested the information, and the assessor had been out the prior week, and I haven't gotten that information yet, so...
Okay.
Can you translate that number? I know sometimes you say, like, 2% would be, you know, X number of dollars for a home of a certain value.
Yes, I haven't calculated what the preliminary tax rates would look like, because I don't have the assessed values. So I would just be guessing at this point, which I did, I don't like to guess. I can project, but guessing is really, that's something I'm comfortable with. So I, I need the information from the town, uh, before I can calculate that.
Okay. But based on his historical budgets, if it's under 2% with an increase, and we've been pretty lean on the budget, I believe, this year, like, we're not going crazy, and a lot of it's need versus want, I, I'm comfortable with what we've talked about, so...
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but...
How do you feel, Chris, Wendy?
I, I agree with Christine.
Yeah, it seems that everything's been very conservative this year.
Jonathan?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I agree, I, you know, I was hoping for a conservative budget this year, um, and it seems like that's what we've seen, uh, so I do appreciate that.
We, we try for that every single year, because again, if you don't have a conservative budget, you are at risk for not hitting your revenue targets, and you're at risk for running out of sufficient appropriations to cover your program costs. So I never want to deliver a budget to you that is not conservative. The unexpected happens, so...
I also appreciate the fact that, um, we have not gotten so many requests, um, this year. Obviously, requests are important, the ones that we've seen are very important, but, um, I don't feel like we have a lot of excess requests this year.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would thank the different departments around the district for being conservative.
That we will do.
And in light of the current situation, we know the economy could take a turn for the worst. So we, as a board, I know we wanna be conservative and cognizant of everybody in the community.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll tie that all together for you, and I should have some very preliminary tax rates, so you'll have a better sense of that at the next meeting as well, along with those multi-year projections and the current fiscal year projections. Okay. So, to wrap it all up, we do have, as a reminder, um, three of our current board members, Christine, Holly, and Meredith, whose turns are expiring. All three have indicated a willingness to continue to serve on the board, and nominating petitions, if there are any other candidates who are interested, um, have to be returned by April 20th to Brittany Barrett as district clerk. So our next meeting will be April 1st, here at the high school. Then we'll have a non-budget board meeting on April 22nd, and then May 6th will be our public hearing that we're required to have, meet the candidates the week after that, and then all leading up to the budget vote on May 19th. So stay tuned, I'm sure we'll have some, uh, updates on those procedures as well, um, as we go through each of these weeks and, uh, trying to make sure that we're controlling crowds. But, um, that is it for the presentation. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. Um, we obviously don't have any visitors with us this evening, um, but we did get a couple of comments, uh, to the board, uh, in advance of the meeting, and I'm just gonna read those into the record. Uh, the first comment, um, is from Kim Mantalvo, and she writes, "Members of the board, as an elementary teacher in the district and parent of a high schooler at BC, I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude. Administrators and teachers worked what appeared to be seamlessly to ready students and parents for this unprecedented event. As a parent and member of faculty, I feel well informed by the open communication from Jody's office, administrators, and faculty. Thank you." And the second comment is from community member and parent Kate Gaffney. "I want to express my great appreciation, first, to the administration for navigating us through this difficult time; second, to the teachers whose emails to my kids have put them at ease as they continue to learn at home under the new format; third, we had a Chromebook glitch slash panic yesterday, and the tech desk was quick to resolve it with a trip to the high school to get a loner; fourth, for those involved in ensuring that the kids who need food will have it; five, for the elementary principal's email highlighting the link to the importance of social distancing; sixth, to the board for meeting under these circumstances to continue the work; seventh, and on and on, you all are amazing, stay safe Next on the agenda, six action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 7.
Point of order.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to isolate item number 6.
Okay.
To be voted on separately.
Okay. Let me restate that. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 5 and 7.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item, number 6.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, um, I, I'm very much in favor of sidewalks, but I have to ask, why this sidewalk and why now? What is it related to? Is it related to the push to put a rotary at the intersection further up the road where, um, the Shoprite Plaza is? Do we know?
It's all part of that same project.
That's what I thought, it was part of it. Yes, so this is an extension of access for citizens heading from now, the intersection of 9W and Fuhrer Bush Road. Um, the sidewalk would extend off of that intersection, heading up towards the shopping areas, uh, north on 9W.
Okay. Um, I, I have seen, and, and, uh, the Times Union actually did a, a study on this a number of years ago, that with the rotaries, that while it, it eliminated, um, deaths at these intersections, um, the amount of damage and the number of collisions skyrocketed. Every time these things are put in, the numbers go through the roof. And I, I got an education in this because when my daughter was in ninth grade, and they put the one in, down in Slingerlands, or that series of them, um, she did her, uh, ninth grade paper and presentation on roundabouts. People still really have a hard time negotiating them, going through them, um, often way too fast. And I really don't feel that I can support anything that would help this project go through. I realize my one vote against is not gonna be all that meaningful, but I, in good conscience, I just can't vote for it.
So, so Jonathan, living in Glamat, there's a lot of kids who ride their bikes and they walk in that area, and regardless of whether the roundabout is there or not, a sidewalk would definitely be beneficial to anybody that's walking in that area, which is separate from the whole roundabout issue. Like, I don't disagree with you on the roundabout, I, I find that they're very unsafe, and if they're gonna put one near the high school anytime soon, I would fight that tooth and nail with all of our new drivers. But, and, but the sidewalk and the easement, I definitely think it's a necessity, and I think it's a, it's a good thing, just being in that area.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, 1 through 10.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Actually, Jody, uh, item nine, is that something that should still be on the agenda?
It is, because, uh, some people had already done the prep and put in the time sheets for it, so...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's only a few, but...
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that, that was accurate. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, 1 through 6.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, 1 through 2.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. E, resolution for 2020, 2021 bus replacement purchases.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on.
Oh, you gotta read it.
You jumped the gun. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item regarding the 2020, 2021 bus replacement proposition.
No.
So moved.
So, uh...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. F, approval of notice of 2020 annual election. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item regarding the 2020 notice of annual election.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next would be recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item, but again, we unfortunately don't have anyone with us tonight. Item 8, future meetings and events. Currently, on the calendar for Wednesday, March 25th, at 6:00 PM, we have a policy committee meeting.
Do you wanna postpone that?
I don't think it's a necessity.
I don't think it's necessary?
Right.
Because we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any policies that are urgent for us to address, no.
Um, well, this, I know we have to reapprove the code of conduct every year. We'll still have time?
Yeah, we'll have time.
Okay. All right. So why don't we take that off of the calendar? Our next board meeting is scheduled to be April 1st at 7:00 PM, anticipating an executive session at 6 o'clock. Uh, current location is here in the cafeteria, subject to, uh, change depending on our current Monday, April 6th, at 5:45 PM, there's a tentative facilities committee meeting. Uh, and Wednesday, April 22nd, is the board meeting, uh, the next board meeting after that, uh, again, 7:00 PM, um, with an executive session, uh, anticipated at 6 o'clock. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.